April sixteenth nineteen eighty-seven are hereby repealed. Article two, salary and compensation for the council person pursuant to KRS eighty-three A point zero seven zero one and KRS eighty-three A point zero seven five two. The salary and compensation for elective office of the council person of the city of Critten in Kentucky for the next elective term of office beginning in January of twenty twenty-one is hereby fixed and established at the sum and amount annually of three thousand three hundred dollars, subject thereafter to adjustment or increase allowed and computed as the cost of living agreement, COLA. The governor's office of local government together with additional allowance be per the of out-of-pocket expenses made or incurred through travel expenses for mandatory or extraordinary activities done for and on behalf of the city. Publicly introduced and read first time February first, February fourth, twenty twenty.
There's no vote tonight on that, it's just the first reading, but I'd like to expand on that. As the city grows, council has more responsibility. And that's kind of in between of Dry Ridge and Williamstown salary. The salary of the council hadn't been raised for what, a decade at least? And I think that the community in public service is a very important position. So that's, Ms. Paul proposed that ordinance, and I thank her for that. And second reading will be next month.
Mayor.
It looks like it's been twenty years since it's.
Twenty years, we're a little behind. But you know, I think the past council members that have served for that much money, you know, because it's a bigger job than what people realize, you know? And they're fighting for the city, and they're fighting for the cleanup and so forth. So I think it's, to me, it's something that should be, should be in place. We have the law enforcement report, Sheriff May.
And just to answer earlier, House Bill fourteen, thirteen money comes from criminal cases. Twenty dollars off every criminal case. I was wrong on the traffic citation. I emailed Megan earlier, right before I got here, the activity, there's three hundred and thirty calls for service in the city of Critten for the month of January. Suspicious persons and collisions are big calls and all that. Kind of wanted to go over, I'm gonna be brief because you're all ready to go home. Just to go over some totals. In two thousand and nineteen, the sheriff's office took twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-seven calls for service throughout Grant County. And in the city of Critten, there was five thousand. Five thousand fifty-nine police responses in the city of Critten for a total of forty-seven hundred twenty-eight actual calls. So some of those have, you know, two and three unit responses. That's kind of what that looks like. I didn't get to get the two thousand and eighteen numbers for Critten, but I will tell you countywide, in two thousand and eighteen, the sheriff's office took eight thousand five hundred forty-four calls. So that's up about four thousand calls. And we took, opened up five hundred and thirty-four cases in eighteen and seven hundred and thirty-two in nineteen. And I've already seen a trend in January calls for service. If it stays on this path, they're gonna be up even higher than those totals. We're already, the month of January, we're at seventy-five cases open, which would put us closer to nine hundred cases. Also, the harvesters, we had a shots fired call there the other day. Didn't sound like anything. One, one call, that's all we got. No other calls, got to the neighborhood, nobody's running frantic. Finally got flagged down, deputy got flagged down by witness and said, hey, you here for the shooting? Calm as can be, cellphone in her hand. Yeah, she said, well, I'm glad somebody called. Why she didn't call, I have no idea. But there was a, an innocent bystander's car that took around. We don't know who the shooter was, we don't know who the victim was, we just know that someone shot a gun. Don't know any other thing about it. So if you all, what I want to encourage again, if you see something, call right away. And encourage your neighbors, call right away. Don't think that the next neighbor's gonna call.
Do you think that incident there was important? Very important?
I know, I know what you're gonna ask, but I, I didn't know about it right away either. Honestly, the deputies, when it was given out, we get shots fired complaints every day. You can look at the activity.
Some were firecrackers, some were.
There was eleven shots fired complaints in January in Critten. The deputy actually disregarded the other deputies coming to the complaint. Hey, there's nothing in the area, I don't see anything. Later on gets flagged down and told, hey, there's a bullet hole in that car. So, you know, my apologies if you, if you wanted to call on that, but you know, if it was inactive, you definitely did it in the first order. Yeah, I found out about it later also, through chef notes.
Thanks.
That's always fun.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
Is it possible with budget coming up, is it possible for you to put together a proposal on having two officers in the city, seven days a week?
Yeah, I can put together anything you all ask me to do. I have the numbers, the capability, you know, we're going through budgeting right now. I've already began my budget, just waiting to meet with the county. So yeah, whatever you all ask me to do, I'll do for you. If you want me to help you all with the budget, if you want me to put together a proposal, whatever task I'm asked, I'll do.
I'll give you a call, Brian. So do you have staffing to do too?
No, we'd have to hire, yep. We definitely have to hire. We, we have three in the academy right now, I failed to mention that also. We've, we've lost three to Northern Kentucky. We got another one, May second, or March second, it's gonna be his first day in Northern Kentucky. And we've got three in the academy, when he leaves, we'll send the fourth to the academy. We have one in a holding pattern right now through phase two. So he'll replace the one that's leaving March second. And then we, we'll always accept applications just because you never know. But we already went through a hiring phase to fill these positions. We knew they were coming, so. And that's one thing I'm putting into my budget and let the fiscal court strike me down, but we're gonna put in for a raise. I mean, I'm not asking, I'm not asking to pay fifty-three thousand a year like Boone County's rubbing in my deputies faces on a weekly basis. But I'd like to be within ten thousand of that.
Is there anything that we could do to help your request on your budget for more higher pay and more officers, more deputies?
Have my back come budget time.
Can I interject on this? If we could get the city council to agree, to send a letter to the budget council and say that we need more law enforcement and we need to keep the ones that we have? Look, I don't know anybody in the county that doesn't agree. Our sheriff's department is first rate. We need our deputies, but they need assistance by getting more people in the process. And it's gonna take dollars.
I'll tell you, I've had people tell me we deserve to be a training ground. I'm not comfortable being a training ground. And you can ask my deputies, when I took over as sheriff, my very first meeting with them is I don't want to hear, I want to be like Boone County, or I want to be like Florence, or I want to be like this other agency. I want to hear people saying, hey, I want to be like the Grant County Sheriff's Office. And the only way we're gonna accomplish that is keep the people that we have and the experience, so.
So if I could clarify this again, if we, if we've wanted an additional person around the clock, we have Lloyd right now, so if we wanted two, you would hire to do that?
Yeah, we'd have to, yes. Yeah, we would absolutely have to hire.
And they would be committed to?
We, yeah, we would do the same thing we're doing now. If we was able to get the numbers and you all agreed and the county agreed, because remember, the agreements with the county, I just built it into my budget, then, you know, come July one, if it was a thumbs up, we would hire the people, I, I would attempt to hire them prior to July, just so they're ready to go, or a little closer to ready to go. But once they're trained, you know, each shift would have two people that you're assigned here.
I didn't know that was a possibility. I thought, you know, you were just gonna hire what your, what fiscal court agrees to. I didn't know that we had the opportunity to maybe.
Well, it's just like the money you pay now, okay? If you all said today that we're done paying you the two ninety-two, then the fiscal court, that's built into the budget. So the same thing that happened with Dry Ridge back in two thousand and six, when they took their money away, we had to lay four deputies off. So it would be the same thing, unless the fiscal court said, hey, we're gonna make that two ninety-two up and just keep what you got. So that's, that's how that's worked since I've been here. The money the city's paying, fund a position, built into that budget.
Let's hope the county steps it up, because we're already paying almost three hundred thousand. So we're paying five hundred for the whole county, so let's hope they step it up a little bit. Thank you, Brian.
Folks, I'll draw your attention to the monthly report that we gave you. Really no surprise, except the number of calls. Since Dry Ridge EMS has been in our building, we have implemented a tier one response plan that we're not chasing and following the ambulance to a scene. That's not what first responders are supposed to be doing. Now, I'm talking first responders as being the ones that go out and be the first person on the scene. Because a lot of times when that happens, with the type of runs that they're getting, we're just standing there bird dogging. We stand there, there they are, hello, and that's it. So we're sending people out, we're creating a liability for the crews running lights and sirens for no reason. Most of the time EMS calls are handled by two persons that are on that ambulance. And if they need further assistance, we have on-call set up to where our people are responding to help them. And we've had multiple calls to where that was necessary. But especially now that we've got the buggy sitting in the station, they're within two minutes, once they respond, to anywhere within the city. And because of that, we've been able to decrease the unnecessary calls. And with this implementation of the tier one, which is also something Williamstown has done, what are we gonna be able to do as volunteers, show up for a psychiatric case? Someone who says they're depressed and wants to go to the hospital? So by decreasing that, we're saving a little bit of money, we're saving a whole lot of liability. And with working with Dry Ridge on this, it's working out pretty well. If you can recall, last year, and another thing is that the weather has been fantastic. It has cooperated, cooperated with us to where last year in January, we had one hundred and twenty-nine runs. This year, we've got forty-seven. The number of car wrecks that we've worked last year, the number of slips and falls was just through the roof. We didn't have it this year. We do have some points of concern that I would like to get with Sheriff Maynes on a couple of residences that were having repeat calls. We've got one residence to where we have made six overdose calls within the month. And again, because of House Bill one eighteen, we can't do anything. The sheriff's department's hands are tied as well. So we need to get with them and point out a couple of points of concern. Some good news, we are in the running for, well, we applied for three grants. One of the grants is going to be a homeland security grant that is to be used to solidify some of the infrastructure within the city. We are applying for three generators, and we're talking big ones. One for city hall, one for the fire department, and one for a third location that we would determine at a later time. These would be used in case we have large extended power outages, we have another torn attic event, God help us, we have anything else really serious occur. That way, city hall, the council, the mayor, and the heads of other departments would be able to congregate here with electricity and turn this into a command post for decision makers, who are you guys, for the city. That would allow the fire department to be logistics and perhaps a backup dispatch if need be. And then the third location would be for staging, operations, et cetera. So we'll see how those grants go, but we do know that we got one already that we have been awarding. So we're gonna be receiving new thermal imaging cameras. I know that's a good one, because we've got all kinds of salespersons calling us now going, hey, haven't talked to you in a long time. By the way, I saw. And also another one that, if you remember, Councilman Dusin had discussed about the cancer concerns and the cleaning concerns for firefighters. We're in the running for the first round of what's called gear extractors. These are monster machines that, they're basically heavy-duty clothes washers. But they're quite expensive. So the state is awarding grants on that, and I understand that we're in the running right now to receive one. So hopefully I'll get you some good news here in the next little bit. And Mayor, if you can indulge me for just one moment, I'd like to go a little off topic, but it is reference to the, the proposal that Council Lady Lowry has proposed. I don't think that proposal is enough. One of the things that I discussed with a couple of council persons prior is I don't think your office compensation is enough for what's expected. If Critten is looking at trying to move forward, and we're trying to do it logically, and we're trying to do it with the thought of long-term planning being one of our major concerns, I think council persons should be receiving, because of, one, you're covering your own expenses, you're even having to cover your own copies, your own research material, your phone bills. Anytime you're working at home or anywhere else, I've seen several of you out doing research and talking to people. Ms. Lowry, you're doing a really good job of representing the harvesters.
I'm drawing.
And you're bringing, you're bringing ideas to cover the rest of the city. Ms. Jennifer, you all have done a lot of research, asked a lot of questions, done a lot of legwork. Mayor, you're in quite a bit. Folks, this might ruffle a few people's feathers, but I think that we've underpaid our council and our mayor for quite a few years. I think the mayor should be receiving twenty-five thousand, choose at least a halftime plus, and then you set a specific number of hours, and then the council should be receiving, in my opinion, ten thousand. That's a grand total of seventy thousand a year extra that we would be paying for the council. With what the city brings in and with what we're asking the council to do in return, I don't think that's an exorbitant amount. Now, I do acknowledge, this is just my opinion, but working with the public, doing everything that is necessary, especially for the background legwork that takes some of these amendments and ordinances to be brought up, I think y'all should consider it. Again, just my idea.
Thank you, Lee. We have, we have to go by the law now, so.
Yeah, I know, but at the same time throwing it out, so those numbers, when you look at them, I mean, seventy thousand. Really? That would bring the council, I think, up to an equitable position.
Where was that two years ago?
In the firehouse hiding.
Mr. Lefigood. Thank you, Lee, I appreciate it.
Thank you, folks.
And at this time, we'll be going into executive session.
Mayor, can I have something, please, if you don't mind? If there's anybody in the audience that wants to say anything, can they say anything in case they want to be, before we go into the executive session?
Yeah, I just thought they'd come back in, but yeah, is there anybody else want to say, say anything or anything on their mind?
I've been asked a couple of times to come, and I haven't been able to come because I have other meetings I'm supposed to be at on Tuesday nights, the first Tuesday night of the month. I, I am pastor at Critten Baptist Church, most of all of you know that. We have a couple of things going on there, Critten Baptist, that I think most of us, most of us are aware of, but I think it needs to be on public record to some extent, so that people in the community know a little more about it. I was there just before I came here, and there were about forty children in our multipurpose room with their parents practicing basketball. Saturday, we will have nine games. Fourteen, fourteen kids will be involved in each of those nine games. Their families will be there. We'll run well over a thousand people through that building on Saturdays for the next twelve weeks. That, that's pretty amazing to me, for a town the size of Critten. Yes, we're growing, and I'm glad, I've seen tremendous growth. I've been here in Critten for the last six years, and it's tremendous what I've seen. And I know for some of you all who have been here all your lives, you've seen it even more, you've noticed the differences. So I'm just, I'm amazed. We started three years ago with ninety kids, and we thought, well, if it grows by ten percent a year, we'll be in good shape. Well, it's more than doubled completely. So, you know, it's, it's crazy right now. We're, we're maxed out, we have a total of one hundred and eighty-four involved in that program. Wednesday nights alone, we don't practice basketball on Wednesday nights, we practice archery on Wednesday nights, and we'll have seventy, up to seventy-five kids on Wednesday nights. It, it blows my mind, it blows my mind, it really does. I say all that to say this, people are saying there's nothing for anybody to do. We're servicing about, well, what would that be, two hundred and fifty kids roughly that we're servicing? Twelve weeks during the fall, no, that's not right, twelve weeks this time of the first part of the year for, with basketball, another seventy-five that we're doing, probably nine months of the year with archery. And I'm sure there are other churches doing some of the same things. And if, if city council, if people of Critten would, would help support some of that, I can bet you there are churches, other churches out there, other independent, what am I trying to say? Other non-public groups, non-secular groups that are, that are willing to do things. But sometimes even just getting seed money to get started. We are very fortunate, we have some folks who are able to give some seed money for some of those things. And that has helped tremendously for us to get started. Now those things are self-funded for the most part. There are other churches, we got just right down the street, Sherman Baptist, a smaller, a little bit smaller church. Around the other way, we've got Violet Ridge. And those churches, Violet Ridge will have a couple hundred kids for a week or two during the summer. It's amazing, I can't hardly drive through there, it's so crowded, so many cars. Those kids are out to party a lot, they're having a grand time. Same with us, when we have vacation Bible school, other churches around as well. If there would be any way that the city of Critten could partner with some of our churches to provide even more, that would help us tremendously, that would also help us develop the city. It would be a two-way street, helping each other. Any question, did anything you had, just wanted to be there?
You do, there's softball there at your church too, right?
Yes, we have a softball league, it starts about May. They try to wrap it up late July. Sometimes the weather doesn't allow that, and they go well into August. They try to get done before school starts so that those kids aren't out here playing ball till ten thirty o'clock, eleven o'clock at night sometimes. But yeah, we have, we have a softball league that we, we facilitate it more than anything. But yeah, there's a lot of things going on, not just with us, but a lot of other, other groups, a lot of other churches who are doing things around.
And you don't have to be a certain denomination of any of those?
No, 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 no. We have, we have kids in, in both of those children's programs as well as our softball leagues. There are folks there from every church, every people who aren't in church. We have a lot of kids, a lot of families who are coming to our upward basketball. They don't go to church anywhere. Now, do we talk to them about church? Absolutely we do, because that's who we are, that's our business. And so we're gonna talk to them about it. They tell us they're not interested, we leave them alone, you know?
Can I ask what age groups you're talking?
Depends on which group you're talking about. The basketball goes from, hmm, what, about?
Kindergarten?
Yeah, about five years old, all the way up to like fourteen or so.
I'd say the ones we cheer for for like fourteen.
Yeah, I think it's fourteen is the upper end. Archery on Wednesday nights, if the child is big enough and strong enough to pull the bow back, moms and dads can shoot with them too. There really is no age, no upper age limit on the archery. Softball, that's mostly used in younger adults. The rest of us, we feel like we'll break bones if we get out running around on softball. So we don't, we kind of let that go.
Long collapse of air force.
Yeah, if you feel healthy enough to play softball, you're welcome. So again, no age limit there. Anything else? I'll talk about it all night, it's multiple.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I, can I piggyback off of you for just a second? I actually started coaching upward cheer this year, and my son is involved in basketball. Don't laugh, because it's all cry. But a lot of these kids that come to church, and he's talking about partnering with the city, a lot of these kids have a hard time even coming, getting there. You know, scholarships are great for these kids. It's a great thing, it gives them somewhere to go. And you never know what's going on at home with them. And it's, and it's a blessing for those kids. And it, I don't do any, it's, it's amazing for me, and I don't have anything to. So that was my two cents.
Basketball, to help out as far as coaching and that kind of thing, there's no experience required whatsoever. And to follow up on what you said about scholarships, if I'm remembering right, about a third of the children who come are scholarship to some degree. There is a fee for that, covers mostly, mostly covers their uniform, but a few other things as well. But it's, we do, we do accept money for scholarship, those kids. Some of them, it's a full scholarship, some of it's half, some of it's just a little bit, whatever it takes to get kids. We want to have as many kids as possible play. Right now, we're maxed out at one hundred and eighty-four, that's between basketball and cheerleading.
How many, how many churches do you think are in the Critten area? Different, different types of churches, Baptist, Catholic, I, I don't know.
In the city limits?
I'm not in the city limits.
I'd like to answer that question, I believe there's four.
Is that it?
I believe in the city limits of Critten.
In the city limits, that's probably right.
Unless you want to count this satellite church down behind you, on Dalton.
You got Mormon, you got lit life over here?
I'm, I'm kind of counting in my head, there's one, two, three, four. There's five or six, there are five or six. Couple of those are really small.
I can think of six right now.
I think you're right, I think you're right.
And I heard rumors.
And I forgot, I forgot the little Bible Baptist over here, their little independent Baptist.
Then I heard a rumor, you can beat the kids at archery night on Wednesdays.
We do, we do, and that's at no charge.
I know I come by there, that, you're talking a lot, it's full, almost every.
I know, I come by there, and that, you're parking lot is full almost every night, and I don't see how you're doing it, because I know the people that are working there, and they're there every night, and...
Many of them, many of them. Um, our, our director for upward basketball is Nick Byrd, most of you know him. He's a tired puppy, he's getting over it, well, I don't know if he's getting over it older, if he's in the throes of it, but anyway, he's dealing with that, and he is wore out. Yeah, it, it's, it's just a matter of investment, people putting time in, we've got, we are a congregation of senior adults, and, um, it's, uh, it's pretty amazing how many people, no matter what, they come and they stay, and they do what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Now, as we enter into executive session, we would ask everyone to, excuse me, we need a motion to go into executive session. Please do make a change, sorry, second? Second.
Yes, sir.